Yep, we are.
We're here.
All right, here we go. Welcome everyone to the April 22 Auburn School Committee meeting. This is a special meeting this evening. We are in compliance with COVID-19. We are holding this meeting through Zoom session. This meeting can be found on the Great Falls TV through arbormaine.gov pages, on Spectrum Channel 1301, and on the city's YouTube channel. So let's start this evening with a roll call, please. Word one. She's there, I see her.
Can't hear her.
Can't hear her though. This thing, girl's fucker, word one, she's there.
Pam Hart, word two.
Jeremy Mathie, word three.
Brian Bellup, word four.
Dan Poisong, word five.
Faith Volontaine at large.
David Simpson at large.
Brian Carrier, Mayor's rep.
All right, so first most first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Tonight's agenda involves public participation as well as the second reading of the graduation policy requirements. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll take a first from Brian, second from Faith. Sorry for a roll call, all those in favor, word one. Can't see her, just give me a thumbs up. Word one, thumbs up. Word two, Pam, yes. Three, yes me, four, Brian.
Yes.
Five, Dan Poisong.
Yes.
Faith.
Yes, yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Brian Carrier. All right, motion passes. Public participation this evening is being done again through telephone number 207-240-3739. I think Nate's gonna put that number up. Again, it's 207-240-3739. If you'd like to contact the school committee for public participation this evening. If you would also like to, you can also use our email addresses that are on the Auburn
Yep, we are.
We're two.
All right, here we go, welcome everyone to the April 22 Auburn School Committee meeting. This is a special meeting this evening. Um, we are in uh complies with COVID-19, we are holding this meeting through Zoom session. Uh, this meeting can be uh found on the Great Falls TV through AuburnMaine.gov pages, on Spectrum Channel 1301, and on the city's YouTube channel. So, let's start this evening with a roll call, please. Word one. She's there, I see her.
Can't hear her.
Can't hear her though. Just saying, girl's fucker, word one, she's there.
Pam Hart, word two.
Karen Mathie, word three.
Uh, Brian Bellup, word four.
Dan Poisson, word five.
Faith Bonetain at large.
David Simpson at large.
Brian Carrier, mayor's rep.
All right, so first most, first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Tonight's agenda involves public participation as well as the second reading of the graduation policy requirements. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All right, I'll take a first from Brian, second from Faith. Sorry for a roll call, all those in favor, word one. Can't see her, just give me a thumbs up, word one, thumbs up. Word two, Pam, yes. Three, yes me, four, Brian.
Yes.
Five, Dan Poisson.
Yes.
Faith.
Yeah, yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Brian Carrier, all right, motion passes. Public participation this evening is being done again through uh telephone number 207-240-3739. I think Nate's gonna put that um number up, again, it's 207-240-3739. If you'd like to contact the school committee for public participation this evening. If you would also like to, you can also use our email addresses that are on the Auburn um school website as well. Oh, wait a minute. Hi, Karen Mathieu.
Yeah, so Karen, um, is public participation now?
It is, can I ask you, yeah, can I ask this call in please?
Yeah, this is Larry Gordon, I'm a teacher at the high school.
Hi.
I'm just calling in, I know the budget uh situation this year, I've been watching all your meetings. And I mentioned this to uh to Katie a couple weeks ago, so it's uh, so it's tough, I believe. But I think she's, she had mentioned that uh she might be looking into it. But I was thinking uh maybe uh some early retirement incentives um for people that are getting up there in age. I don't know what that would save. I know that probably the retirement pool may not be a real large one, but my thought is if it saves one position, uh then that's one position that was saved. Uh, so again, I just wanted to put that out there again, it's uh, I did let Katie know about it. I believe they, they did this back in 2015. Um, and I'm trying to do some research on it, trying to find out who retired and what information they might have. You know, what kind of a package, what kind of incentives uh that they gave these folks. But I haven't uh just got time um finding any of this. And again, I believe they were gonna do some research on their end to see, you know, what the incentives were. So anyway, uh, thought I'd throw that out there.
All right, great, thank you Larry, I appreciate you calling in.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, have a good night, bye bye.
Yeah, bye.
All right, wait another second or two. All right, saying that, I'm gonna close public participation and move on to the agenda item that uh is before us tonight around the graduation policy requirements. We're still muted, Michelle.
Yep.
Um, so last, at our last meeting last week, uh you heard an extensive um explanation on the changes to the graduation requirements to address the needs of the graduating class of 2020. And so tonight, you're in this, and you approved that with the first reading, second reading tonight for approval, and then it will be um included in the policy manual. So, any questions before we go to that approval vote?
I make the motion that we approve this policy language as presented.
All right, second?
Second.
Second.
All right, second, I'll take Brian Bell now. Let's do roll call. Word one, yes, word two. Yep, I saw yes and a three, yep, word three, yes for me, word four.
Absolutely.
Word five.
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Dave Simpson?
Yes.
And Brian Carrier.
Yes.
Motion passes, eight nothing, you're good to go, Michelle. All right, upcoming meetings, we have budget workshop uh next week at six, and um it's pretty much about it. It's a, it's a budget workshop, I don't believe there's a meeting to that. But it's budget. Brian, was that Brian Carrier, was that, did you need to add something?
Well, just something that was brought up, I didn't know if you were fixing to close out, but uh communication from somebody, and Michelle may be able to answer it, or be something to think about. Uh, David Young, a former counselor, had wanted to know uh plans for graduation, if there's uh if the school had made any kind of arrangements for graduation. And he brought up the, the idea of a drive-by graduation, having the kids spaced on the field and setting out and, and having the parents and everybody drive by, and at least giving the kids some recognition in that manner.
Yeah, I think there are a few things being talked about right now for graduation recognition. Uh, it's my understanding, there, there will be some, there will be something. Um, and so we can probably ask Superintendent Grana to update us on what graduation will be, what it will look like if it can't be the traditional graduation, so.
And Scott and you're just magically appeared on your screen. I know that they've been working with students on, on what uh their preferences are, but Scott, you could probably fill in a little bit.
Yeah, their preferences are graduation, you know.
Yeah, typical traditional regular graduation, yeah, yeah.
Um, actually, we uh last week, talking with the area principals, that was, that was the focus of the conversation. And similar to how we approached this, we kind of developed some tiers of when there's community safety available. If this, by this date, if we have community safety, um then we would go with what we had originally planned for June 5th, 6th. If there's another marker mid-May where we, we cross that and we can't get beyond it, then we would start looking for something in the middle of July, and then the next marker, actually, the biggest marker that we're really looking for is will the um municipal election take place on July 14th as expected, um because that would be a big indicator of community safety standards. And from there, then we would start looking to do some, some plans, uh if we could do something all together uh with some social distancing, without social distancing, whatever that could look like. Uh, we've started to develop some plans to do stuff at the school, uh whether that would be people onsite or we would be talking about a drive-in situation. Um, the last, last threshold would be a virtual. Um, the kids aren't super eager about that, we're not super eager about that, uh but that's kind of like the last threshold. So we've been building tiers of when we have dates crossed as to what's the next um available possible option for us to be able to do.
Okay. I figured there was conversation brewing around that for sure, it's percolating in these kids' minds, absolutely. They want cap gown, they want to cross the threat, they want to cross the stage, um so thank you Scott.
Big deal. And there's all kinds of um little pieces, like right down to distributing yearbooks and, and those kinds of pieces that we want to be sure that we, we have an opportunity to be able to do and to be able to honor them through that process.
Oh, I didn't even think of that, your senior yearbook and having everyone sign your senior book, oh, I didn't even think of that part.
I just thought of that too, and I was like, oh, that's another one.
Yep.
Oh man.
Yeah, so, all right, we'll keep us, keep us posted for sure, we'll ask Katie for an update at the next um, the next regular meeting too, just to um kind of keep on top of that, so, all right, everyone, with all that.
Sorry, I just have one thing, well, actually two things. What, on the next um, on the, in the next meeting, on the agenda, is the stipend discussion on that agenda? Okay, and also.
Added from last meeting, we said next regular meeting, yep.
And also, um, I've been getting a lot of questions from parents as to um, and I know it's all up in the air, but as to whether or not we're gonna be out of school for the rest of the year, or if we're gonna go back. Um, and I guess, I don't know if we, we could ask Katie that, what's going on. I know that um, you know, the DOE recommended that we could close all along, and I know Massachusetts has closed for the rest of the, the year, and I can believe Connecticut is as well. Um, so I was just wondering, because I know, actually I've had quite a few parents ask me if I knew that.
If the building itself is gonna reopen again.
Yeah, if we're gonna be going back, or not.
So you have some information, we're getting, you're right, Pam, we're getting a lot of, of um inquiry, inquiries about that as well on Facebook and through other, other means. Um, right now, as of um, on Monday on our return, the regional superintendents will be um convening and talking about that and have hopefully a, a clearer sense of what that's gonna mean. The DOE has not said we're gonna close school, just, I'm just gonna repeat, they've said um to prepare for distance learning, remote learning to the end of the school year, because of the buildings, just as was said earlier.
Yeah, that, sorry, that's what I meant by, you know, close, not closing school now, but just if, if we're gonna continue doing what we're doing right now to the end, or if we're gonna go back into the schools. That's been, I apologize, I kind of.
Yeah, so we just use every opportunity to say it that way so that people, you know, remember that we're gonna keep open for business, and you all voted um at your last meeting about June 5th. Uh, but yes, that we'll um, we'll be having that conversation about what that means. We still have the governor's order in place for May 15th, so all these variables are uh, and, and we also are hearing, as you all are, about a re-entry plan, but don't have any specifics on what exactly that means. So to make a, a, a decision too prematurely would, might add to confusion. So there will be a conversation on that Monday, um when we get back from vacation, uh to look at what currently is uh the, the um directive coming out of the governor's office, and then to start to make some definitive plans about communicating for the next, for the rest of the year. So that Wednesday meeting certainly will be, I'm sure it'll be talked about again.
Okay.
Their way.
I think people are just scared, and they just, you know, they just want some kind of path, some, something to follow right now, because there's so many, there's so much indecision, and not, not from the Auburn School Department, I'm not, that's not directed to the Auburn School Department, I think just in general. Um, and so I think that's why people are just wondering.
Yeah, it's hard right now.
It is.
It's hard, it's hard on, on everyone, and particularly, this is one, one more stressor, is the unknown of how long are we doing this? So, and then Karen, one last thing, just, I didn't get a chance um, uh from Larry Gordon's uh call in earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
That is something that I, uh, I know that is, Katie and Adam are looking at and doing the research on, trying to put together, answer some of the questions that he asked, a few other questions that have come up. So I'm sure that'll be something that will be reported out as well.
Yeah, yeah, next, uh, next Wednesday, during budget workshop, uh, at six o'clock. All right, everyone, we good?
Motion good, motion.
You broke up, but I heard motion to adjourn, Mr. Simpson. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Second.
All right, got you Brian. All right, all those in favor, we don't need roll call on this one, all those in favor, show your hands up. All right, motion passes, meeting adjourned, 7:14, thank you all.
Night all.
Bye. Bye.
Good night guys.
Bye.
Good night guys.